Christina. All right, good evening, everyone. It is March 25, 2024 at 5:30 PM. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Moorhead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of community gen-- or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the citizens addressing the council item on the agenda. Please state your name and if you are a Moorhead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Moorhead website at moorheadmn.gov. We, the Moorhead City Council, collectively and with gratitude, acknowledge the sacred land the City of Moorhead has built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Ojibwe, Mati, and all Indigenous communities permeates this land. And with that, Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Ryan Nelson.
Here.
Matt Gilbertson.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Laura Karun.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Larry Selgevold.
Here.
Sebastian McDougall.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here. And for those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And City Manager Amali, do we have any agenda amendments?
Yes, Mayor. We have a request to remove item 13A from the consent agenda.
Okay, so item 13A has been removed. And then moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move Niesemeyer.
Second.
Karun. Niesemeyer with the approval, Karun with the second. Any questions or comments? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, there is a presentation tonight from the Sanford Ambulance. Welcome. Looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Is this on? Can you hear me okay? Well, thank you, Mayor Carlson, members of the council. My name is Tim Meyer. I'm the Senior Director at Sanford Ambulance and Sanford Air Med. And I'm here today to talk about the ground ambulance activity in the City of Moorhead. We've been doing this for a couple of years in Fargo, and this year we decided to do the-- give the other cities in our footprint, just so you have an awareness, trying to be transparent. So, okay, so, just for a little background, we do have about 150 employees, and the field staff consists of 32-- 34 paramedics, 88-- I'm sorry, 88 paramedics, 32 EMTs, and 13 dispatchers. We do have our own dispatch center, because we do a lot of non-emergency work in conjunction with-- 911 calls go into Triple RDC, but they do send the medicals over to us. We are accredited agency. There's 182 agencies in the United States that are accredited, only four in Minnesota, so we're one of four in Minnesota, and we're the only North Dakota ambulance that's accredited, so we're kind of proud of that. And in the City of Moorhead, this is a-- kind of see on this map, but these are all the stations or the postings that we have for the ambulances. The bigger stars are Moorhead. Our primary post is what we call Post 2, which is over by Chumley's. And we've had that post for a very long time. It's a very good spot to cover Moorhead, but we do also frequently have a post-- an ambulance at Post 9, which is, I believe, a parking lot. Hornbacher's Parking Lot, is that correct? Yeah. We, at peak periods throughout the entire city, we have 12 ambulances on, and they can go wherever the need is throughout the metro area. So our call volume in Moorhead for 2023, we did just over 5,000 ambulance calls in the City of Moorhead, and this graph breaks it down by month. The larger part of the bar towards the bottom, the middle bluish area, is patients transported, and then the upper two areas are patients not transported. So sometimes we don't find any patient. We're on a standby event where there really isn't any patient, but we're just there, just in case. So we average right-- it's right around the 400-- 350 calls to 400 calls per month in the City of Moorhead. This is a busy graph, but it's a five-year depiction of the volume within Moorhead. So it has risen a bit in the-- since 2019. We're trying to figure out where our new baseline is, because, to be honest, during the COVID pandemic, our call volume did spike quite a bit, and I think it's returned to normal after-- you can see kind of a step off after right around January of 2022, but slightly more calls per day. So we started off at about 13 calls per day in 2019, and we're at about 15 calls per day at the end of 2023. So here is our response volumes depicted on what we call emergent. That's where we would go with lights and sirens versus non-emergent. So we're very conscious of the safety aspect of responding to emergencies throughout the city. About half the calls we get are triaged out through the dispatching coding process to be what we would call non-emergent, so we wouldn't go lights and sirens. And it's a very statistically valid system. It's used nationally. It's tested hundreds of millions of times every year, so we can be assured that we're not missing an emergency when they're-- respond without lights and sirens. So the top blue bar on this graph are emergent responses. The greenish part is non-emergent. And then there are some calls that we start out going emergent, and we're downgraded based on the dispatcher's coding of the call, or vice versa, where they upgrade us to emergent. And here's the entire city. This is what we call our heat map, and most of the calls that we do are kind of in the downtown area of Fargo. You can see that by the darker colors and headed out Moorhead. We can-- we do have pretty good coverage from our Fargo station into North Moorhead as well. So we have an ambulance that's stationed at the Broadway Hospital. Doesn't take long to get over Moorhead from there. Here's our response time performance. Our goal is to meet 90% of our calls in less than nine minutes. Overall, for 2023, we're about 93%, between 93 and 94% in the City of Moorhead. State law requires us to be able to respond to any point within our area, within the City of Moorhead, for instance, within 10 minutes, so we're well below that, and our internal standards are more stringent. So as far as the types of calls in the City of Moorhead, the bottom bar here is the most frequent call, with being behavioral or psychiatric episode. But just to put it in context, if you remember from a previous slide, we did about a little more than 5,000 calls per year, and about 340 of them were behavioral health calls. So it's just that there's a long list of things to choose from to code calls, but that seems to be the most frequent. And it's true in Fargo as well. This is our destination of determination. So most of the-- about 70% of our patients go to Sanford, and about 30%, 25 to 30% go to Essentia, and a few go to the VA. That follows the market split. We're pretty sensitive to make sure to get people to the correct hospital. I've said this many times, people are very loyal to their health care, and they want to go where their insurance is correct, where they have their records, and where the doctor practices, all that. So we-- that's our goal, is to get people to the right spot. In this slide, the pie chart really shows our transport versus non-transport. So you can see that about 70% of our-- the calls we go on end up resulting in a transport, and about 30% are no transport, for a variety of reasons. And the bar graph that starts on the left is how we make the determination of where people go. So the vast majority of the time, it's a patient's decision, or the family's decision. Next in line, it would be the patient's physician's decision, like coming from a nursing home or a clinic. Once in a while, we have to go to the absolute closest facility, but that's not frequent. So we're one of 18 ambulance services in the United States that have met the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Gold standard since the inception of the standard. And just for context, there are about 30,000 ambulance services across the United States, so we're one of 18 that have met the standard every year that's been available. But it includes nine measures that we have to meet in both heart attack and stroke care. So we work closely with our first responding groups, like the Moorhead Fire Department and Police Department, as well as the hospitals, to ensure people get to-- in the case of a heart attack, they would get into the cath lab quickly, so we can read 12 leads in the field, 12 lead EKGs, and send that data to the hospital, make sure they get into the hospital quickly. That's our goal, is to get them into the cath lab very quickly. Time is muscle. And for the time-sensitive patients that we-- and we've depicted on this slide, STEMI, which is a heart attack, strokes, critical patients that might be an airway issue or sepsis, something like that, or trauma. Our average response times throughout the year is about a little over six minutes, and you can see the number of each of those calls within the City of Moorhead. And this last slide has to do with cardiac arrest in the City of Moorhead. So we submit data to a national group called the CARES to compare us with national standards. So-- and this is national standards from 2022 and our 2023 data. So the national standard would be that 40% of the people receive bystander CPR, and we're slightly better than that, so doing very well there. 11% of the people have bystander-applied AED, and we had none of that in the City of Moorhead last year. But I-- that would not include AEDs that are applied by the police or the fire department. But we have good system within Moorhead, and our first responders would do that, versus somebody grabbing one off the wall at the school or something. The most important metric here is nationally, 9.3% of-- The most important metric here is nationally, 9.3% of people suffering sudden cardiac arrest out of the hospital survive to be discharged from the hospital. And in Moorhead, it's 9.1%. So we're very close. We do a good job with cardiac arrest management within the city of Moorhead. And our score being 20% in Moorhead versus 30% nationally, there's just not a huge sample number for Moorhead. You know, a couple of patients, one way or the other, will move that number pretty quickly. So we still feel it's a very positive number. And then the last bullet point about bystander-provided CPR and/or AED, and we have an A. So you have to remember, this is 2023 data, and we still have people that suffered out of hospital cardiac arrest in 2023 that remain in the hospital. So we can't close out that data until, you know, they are discharged or moved to the next thing with their healthcare journey. So that's kind of the rundown of what's happened in Moorhead over the last year. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. This is really great information, and congratulations on always, you know, making the goals as far as the response time. I know that that is sometimes challenging to do, particularly with our railroads. But we're trying to alleviate that in Moorhead by getting an underpass someplace.
Yeah, that'd be a good change.
So council member Niesmeyer.
I have one follow-up question. The AED, I thought, was a really interesting number. I also appreciate how our first responders are applying those. We often see those as bystanders hanging in facilities. Is that something that the Sanford Ambulance offers training to civilians to perhaps participate in? So we would be able to participate if we were able to get CPR training? That that's another type of training that we could seek if we wanted to be of help and support to our community members?
Absolutely. We have a big training program within our ambulance service. In fact, we train about 3,000 to 5,000 people every year through varying courses. So all the way from, we have a babysitting class that teaches 11- and 12-year-old girls how to take care of emergencies if they happen to be babysitters, all the way up through paramedic training, people can get an associate's degree. And we, and AED use as part of CPR training. So we would, and maybe the Moorhead Fire Department does this as well, but we would also, we do offer that training to the public.
Marvelous. Thank you.
Council member White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question about opioid overdose response. And I know that typically, it's our fire department, our first responders, and most often, it would be fire that are there and doing things like administering Narcan. But, and I know that for folks who've been revived because of Narcan, that they don't always even want to go to the hospital. But I just noticed, I didn't see any data. And so are you, I'm assuming that you, while it may not be as frequent, but you must be doing some of the transports too? And are you tracking any of that data? And I know we've been working on some OD mapping things too. And, and so I just wondered, I was surprised I didn't see anything in there.
Yeah, of course, we have overdoses in the city of Moorhead, and we do track that data. We submit a big dataset to the states of Minnesota and North Dakota. And we've included that in other presentations. It's hard to know what the city council wants, so next year, we'll be sure to have that. But I bet Kathy might know something about overdose, and maybe Dr. Van Valkenburg.
Hi, yes, I don't have the exact numbers for you right now, but they didn't, the good news is that they didn't meet our top 10. And so it's a little bit more prevalent on the Fargo side of the river than it is on the Moorhead side. So take that with a grain of salt, but that's hopefully good. We are seeing some overall for all of our footprint. We are seeing more Narcan doses given than we are Narcan patients. So what I mean by that is patients seem to be getting more than one dose of Narcan, which we really want to stress to people, if that first dose isn't working, it's important to do CPR and breathing for the patient because it may not be an opioid that they have overdosed on. So with that, anything else?
Answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
I don't think we have any other questions. So thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming and giving us this information. It's always, I think, enlightening to know what the ambulance is being called for and, and also the number of calls you guys are getting. I think it's also interesting to see that there's an overwhelming number of individuals who are choosing to not be transported to the hospital. So thank you for, for doing all you do in the communities.
All right, thank you for having me.
Great, so moving on to number six, approval of the March 11th, 2024 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve meeting minutes?
So moved Nelson.
Second McDougal.
Motion by Nelson, second by McDougal. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the approval of the meeting minutes. At this time, do we have any citizens who wish to address the council? Any citizens wishing to address the council? Right, seeing none. Moving on to number nine. The first is a public hearing regarding the request of Sterling Development Group for LLC for Renaissance Zone Property Tax Exemption for a mixed-use project located at 600 Center Avenue. And do I, could I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this agenda item?
So moved.
White.
A second, Karun. White with a motion, Karun with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open, and I'll turn it over to Economic Development Director Derek LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. One quick correction, we actually just got word from our planning team. We have an updated address for this property. So instead of 600 Center Avenue, it'll be 650 Center Avenue. So just a quick point of a clarification, as we just updated the address system for the, for the site itself. As mentioned here, we have Sterling Development Four Group LLC, represented by Mr. Kevin Bartram, who is here today, if you have any questions for him. We're extremely excited for this project to kick off. This is taking some existing parking lots within the east side of our Moorhead Center Mall District, one that Mr. Bartram and his group acquired from United Suggers. The other one was a portion of a publicly held city parking lot just to the north of that. So this is a consolidation of those two lots to create one large mixed-use project. The mixed-use project itself consists of two separate three-story apartment towers that would combine to about 125 units, plus community rooms and roof terraces, et cetera. The first floor would consist of commercial that would front Center Avenue. That would be about 12,000 square feet, as well as an additional almost 3,000 square feet that will be on the west side of the building that will face the new development to the, the west of the site. Also, the main floor consists of an on-grade parking structure. So existing parking for that residential component and some of the commercial will exist within the structure itself. So all in total, a four-story building, two four-story buildings, if you want to bring it that way, one overlooking the river, one overlooking Center Avenue. So pretty spectacular project. This is a part of our Renaissance Zone District. So for our council members and public that don't know much about our Renaissance Zone projects and, and project kind of goals and outlines, we do have some standards that we put in place, those that meet our goals and objectives of the Renaissance Zone policy. This project certainly does that with consistency of creating an activity generator, building upon our walkable district, a neighborhood center, downtown entryway, and then many other options as well. So our Renaissance Zone works based on project investment. This project is close to $25 million of, of investment. Total is about 120,000 square feet. So the project total cost per square foot exceeds our threshold of $200 a square foot for a 15-year exemption. The 15-year exemption works with the first five years being 100% exempt. The next five years are at 75. The remaining five years will be at 50%. So it starts phasing as we go out of it. This project is located, again, in our downtown mixed-use zoning district, so it meets all zoning requirements, and is, again, one of the big kickoffs to our, our downtown vision project that we have. One thing of note, and I know council member Gilbertson is not here with us today, but Mr. Bartram has done a great job, I think, of working with some of the existing tenants within the Moorhead Center Mall and seeking opportunities for those tenants. Downtown Chiropractic is one of those tenants that is choosing to establish new routes not far from their existing locations within that 12,000-square-foot commercial fronting Center Avenue. We're really grateful that they're willing to do that and actually expanding space and services with this new location that's being built. So again, our process, we bring this to the Economic Development Authority, which had unanimous support. This is being recommended here to council today. If approved by council, we would be looking at a spring construction date, spring 2024, with the completion of hopefully December 2025. So again, very encouraged by Mr. Bartram and all the work he continues to do in our downtown, and we'd be supporting this project moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know Mr. Bartram would as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. This is the public hearing portion of this agenda item. So is there anybody in the audience, members of the public, who wish to speak on this agenda item? Again, anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Right, seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So moved. Niesmeyer.
Second.
I have a motion by Niesmeyer, a second by McDougal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Any questions or comments to Mr. Derek LaPointe? Council member White.
Thank you, Mayor. Derek, I just, I'll touch on some of the things that I mentioned at EDA. First of all, I am really excited. I can't wait for this project to start. It'll, it'll be nice to see some things going up rather than just coming down. And I think it, I really like the idea that we're going to have a fitness center there. I think it fits with the lifestyle of the folks that are probably going to be attracted to that area, folks who want, you know, active life, being able to get out on the trails and parks right close by, but when the weather's not great, to be able to be inside and be active as well, I think will be really appealing. And so my question, I wanted to ask about, I know this is, that Mr. Bartram is looking for 120 to 125 market rate apartments. So if we could just talk about that a little bit more? I know we're looking at having housing that will be able to be accessible to people at all income ranges. And I, I know this one is not a, an affordable housing project, and that's, you know, that maybe the next one will be. But, but even what are we talking about in terms of price point?
Kevin, would you be able to speak on maybe unit mix and maybe some initial costs?
Great.
Good question. I don't know that I have specific rental numbers or anything like that, but design-wise, the, part of the reason for the two towers, one facing Center Avenue, one facing the park, was to try to get two different market points, price points. The apartment units facing the river are going to be larger, probably more two-bedroom and more three-bedroom than one-bedroom, and a little bit higher price point because of, because of the view to the river. The apartments that are located on Center Avenue in that tower, they're intentionally smaller, more one-bedrooms, more one and two bedrooms, fewer three bedrooms, so that there would be a, a different price point for those apartments than the, the other apartments facing the river. So we were, we were also sort of aware that 120 apartments, 125 apartment units at one time hitting the market is a little bit of a scary deal, no matter where you are. So we kind of wanted to, wanted to phase them in a little bit. So the south tower should finish first, and that'll be the lower, lower-cost apartment units, and the north tower along the river should finish maybe six months later. So we've got essentially two 60-unit apartments coming online with different price points. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Absolutely does. Thank you.
Council member Karun.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This project is really exciting, and I just wanted to mention something that I also spoke about at the EDA meeting. This, in between these two units, having some of that rooftop green space as a possibility, I think, is also very exciting. I think that would be a really great addition to the downtown, and having that ability to get outside a little bit and kind of take in more of those views and things is, that would be a big, a big bonus for these folks that are living there. So appreciate the, the time and intentionality put into this project, and I think it's going to be a really great addition. So thank you.
Council member Niesmeyer.
I actually was going to follow up and ask a similar question to council member Karun, and ask more about some of that green space, some of that sustainability and resilience sort of elements that you're tying in. I saw that green space as perhaps one of those elements, sort of using that design feature not only as a benefit to really draw people to that space, but as, as a sustainability feature to the design as well. And could you speak anymore to any of the features to those development buildings?
The, the green space that you're talking about on the roof between the two towers, that, the, the final design of that is still kind of in, in progress. But each of the towers has, has equal access to that space, and we just need to figure out where all our numbers come in and decide what sort of amenities we're going to be able to afford in and around that area. Some of the other amenities, though, besides that, that don't show up quite as much, we were planning an extra story of amenity space on the, on the north tower, but are working out an agreement with the fitness center that'll be in the building to, to provide, where all our, our tenants are able to use that fitness center at a discount, or we're going to, in a sense, sort of subsidize them to use that facility. So we don't have to put a fitness center in our space, which freed up an entire story of a, which allowed us to do a roof terrace that faces the, the river, the northwest corner of the building, along the river. So that's going to be a really nice amenity that we're, we're pretty excited about. So I wish I could answer more specifically what we're going to do with that space. We just don't, we haven't gotten quite that far yet to develop it. But, but a big part of it is to provide access from the second floor of each tower to that space, and we have that built in right now. We just have to kind of figure out how the, how the rest of it comes together.
It's seen no further questions. I would be looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Renaissance Zone for block 600, what is it, what's the new address?
50.
650.
Thank you.
Second, Niesmeyer.
I have a motion by Karun and a second by White, or I apologize, council member Niesmeyer. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Bartram. I also wanted to publicly thank you for the use of your beautiful facility, the Armory, on Saturday for our 11th Street Underpass program. It was absolutely gorgeous. Governor Walz even commented on how lovely the, the space was, and, and the architecture was fantastic, and you do such a great job. And also to thank you for the dirt that is now going to Matson Field. That was the leftover from digging at the Creamery site, too. So you are a great community partner, and we just really appreciate all the things that you're doing. And also, what a beautiful job that you do with everything you, you touch. So thank you. All right, moving on to 9C, would be looking for a motion to open the public hearing for Fourth Avenue North and 30th Street North Underground Utility and Street Improvements.
So moved Nelson.
Second, Niesmeyer.
I have a motion with Nelson, a second with Niesmeyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and this public hearing is open, and I will turn it over to Assistant City Engineer Clay Lexon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This public hearing is being held to satisfy the requirements of Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 429, to receive public comment prior to ordering improvements. That will include the use of special assessments to finance the improvements. This public hearing is for street improvements project for Fourth Avenue North and 30th Street North. Project will consist of pavement improvements and sidewalk and ADA improvements, as well as spot repairs to the curb and gutter. The streets were constructed in several parts in this project area between the late 70s and early 1990s. Paving condition index ranges from 54 to 82. There's a sidewalk gap on the east side of 30th Street between Second Avenue and the entrance to Runnings, and there is several non-compliant pedestrian ramps. The public utilities were installed in 1970- The public utilities were installed in 1978. All utilities are in good condition, and the water and sanitary are both PVC. The proposed improvements include a rehab of 30th Street and a mill and overlay of Fourth Avenue. A rehab involves replacing the entire pavement section, but the curb and gutter would stay in place. Mill and overlay includes removing and replacing the top couple inches of pavement. Again, the curb and gutter would remain in place except for spot repairs. As mentioned previously, there's a sidewalk gap on the east side of 30th. There's a sidewalk to the north and a connection at the south end, and in accordance with the sidewalk policy, we propose to fill in this gap. The adjacent property owners were notified of this. As of today, there's no opposition to the sidewalk, and there's no proposed utility work within the project area. This is a map of the assessment area. 30th Street is proposed to be a rehab, and that would be assessed at $85 a front foot. Fourth Avenue is proposed to be a mill and overlay, which is $40 a front foot. There are a total of 58 properties within the assessment area. The total amount of being assessed is approximately $175,000. The average assessment is about $3,000, and the maximum assessment is approximately $44,000, which is the East 10 Shopping Center, which contains several businesses, including Runnings and Autozone, and they have a lot of front footage. The total project cost is expected to be about $774,000. Assessments will generate $175,000, and the city will bond for the remaining amount of The public hearing notice was mailed out on March 14th. We've received several general questions about the project. There was an informational video posted to the city website on February 9th, and as of last week, that had about 30 views. There was a letter that went out to address the sidewalk gap that was sent out to the three properties kind of immediately adjacent to that gap. Two responded in favor, and one did not respond. This project was bid last week. Tonight, after the closure of the public hearing, we are asking you to consider a resolution to order the improvements and award the bid. This is a CIP project and not a petition project, and would require seven out of eight councilmembers to approve. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing portion of this agenda item. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Again, any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So moved Seldervold.
Second Nelson.
Got a motion by Seldervold and a second by Nelson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? The public hearing is closed for this agenda item. Any questions or comments by councilmembers? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve this resolution to order improvements and declare official intent for this project item.
So moved Niesmeyer.
Second Karun.
A motion by Niesmeyer, a second by Karun. Further questions or any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. Is that for D and E? For both? Okay. All right, I'd be looking for a motion to open the public hearing for 14th Street North, 16th Street North, and 6th Avenue North Underground Utility and Street Improvements.
So moved Karun.
Second.
Have a motion by Karun, a second by McDougall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Tom Trobridge.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is the public hearing for 14th Street North, 16th Street North, and 6th Avenue North Area Improvements. And again, this public hearing is being held to satisfy the requirements of Minnesota statutes, Chapter 429, to receive public comment prior to ordering the improvements that include the use of special assessments to finance those improvements. This project, 6th Avenue North from 9th to 14th Street and 14th Street, all of it that's part of this project, those are bituminous roads with a soil cement base. The other roads that are out there, the rest of 6th Avenue and then the portions of 16th Street, are bituminous on a gravel base. That's more the type of construction we do nowadays. We like to have the gravel base under there, but if the road's in pretty good condition, even with the soil cement, which means they mixed some soil into the clay and then paved over the top of that, some of those have held up pretty well, and much of these, in this case, have. The pavement condition indexes out there range from 34 to 72, and then sidewalks, most of the area has sidewalks both sides of the street except 6th Avenue North. Most of 6th Avenue only has a sidewalk on the north side. There are a couple of blocks that have pieces of sidewalk on the south side, and I'll get more into that later when I talk about how we address sidewalk gaps in our system. And then, given that most of this area was built in the 1950s, it should not be any surprise at all that basically none of the pedestrian ramps that are out there would comply with the current ADA standards. The utilities out there would have also been constructed in the 1950s generally. The storm sewer is RCP, and that's an acceptable condition. The sanitary sewer is, basically, it's almost all VCP, and that's, so clay pipe, and it's generally acceptable condition. If we do determine that it needs repairs, we would line it, which can be done without digging up the pavement, and so we're not proposing to do any changes on the sanitary sewer. And then the water main is a mix. Some of it has already been replaced in the past and is a PVC, but most of it is cast iron pipe that's out there. And there are a few known lead water services out there that MPS will be addressing with the work that they do. And then, this is also kind of an unusual area that when 6th Avenue was platted, all of the lots really faced on the side streets, so there are a couple of areas where we do not have sanitary sewer or water main going down those roads. And subsequent to plating, somebody split lots, putting some lots in the middle, and they ran services from the adjacent streets. So rather than have a main in front of their house, they ran 150-foot-long service to get to their house down the boulevard. Those are not desirable, and when it's, when there's a good opportunity to address those, we look to do that, and I'll get more into that later on the proposed improvements. So generally, when the streets are in a much better condition above a 50 PCI, and that's on a scale of 0 to 100, when it's over 50, if we can do a mill and overlay, we will do that. And so much of these streets, we're proposing to do a mill and overlay. This map shows that. Primarily, it's all of 14th Street, and then about half of 16th Street and about half of 6th Avenue. And when we do a rehab, so the mill and overlay, we're not going to replace the curb and gutter, only do some minor spot repairs, and we might have some minor pavement patching, but we're just going to take off the top layer of asphalt and replace it. When it's a rehab, that's when we don't believe a mill and overlay will be cost-effective, and then we have to remove all of the pavement. We will also dig out the clay underneath it and replace it with gravel, but we do try to preserve most of the curb and gutter that's there. Again, the benefit here is the concrete curb and gutter can last much longer than the asphalt pavement, and so we're trying to take advantage of that and keep our overall costs down. So I had mentioned that we have a couple of sidewalk gaps out there, and they show better on the previous map, that there's an inset. You can see the black line on there is where we're proposing to fill in sidewalk. Just to the left of that on the south side, you'd also notice there's two other short gaps of sidewalk. We did not propose to replace those, and the main reason is, one of them would take out a lot of mature trees, that'd be the only way to put in the sidewalk, and we really didn't want to do that. And the other one has a major, a very large utility box that would require relocation, and there really isn't space in the right of way to put that and the sidewalk. So those are spots that we did at our discretion. We were not proposing to put in sidewalk in those areas, and that's, the policy does have that written in there to have us use judgment on whether or not we should propose it. And so we did propose it on that one block to tie in those two properties that are in the middle, where they do have a sidewalk, to an adjacent street. And out of the six properties on there, we solicited input from them. One of them had said, yes, proceed with the sidewalk. Two of them requested no. For the policy, we require 75%, and this is written in the city code, that 75% would have to oppose it for us to remove the proposed sidewalk from the project, and so we kept it in the plans as it is. Subsequent to this, one of the comments today, one more property owner had asked about possibly deleting it, but that still doesn't hit that 75% threshold. So we are still proposing to put that sidewalk in. Utilities out there, Morehead Public Service is planning to replace 10 blocks of water main that's out there. The lead services that are known are on those 10 blocks. I'm not sure the exact number, but MPS is aware of it, and they'll address those with their projects. One block of replacement is being done under the city contract, and that's largely because we're also doing the sewer on that block, we're adding a new sewer, and it would just be too difficult to coordinate the work and time it properly, so we're keeping that in our contract there. And so, and then I had mentioned, there's those two blocks between 9th and 10th, and between, I think it's 12th and 13th Streets, where there are some internal lots that have long services. We're proposing to install a new sewer main, and then if somebody wants to connect to it, they would be assessed the cost of connecting, or they would have to just install their own service to make the connection, but we'll get the mains in front of their properties so that it's much easier for them to do if they choose to do that. And then also with this project, Excel Energy is going to be replacing 15 blocks of gas mains in that area, so there'll be a lot going on. So the assessment area map, this project has both front footage and area-wide assessments, so front footage is pretty obvious. If we're doing work right in front of your house, you get a proposed assessment, and what gets, can catch people off guard is for collector streets, we have an area that gets assessed, and in this case, 14th Street is considered a collector's street, and so we're assessing halfway to the next collectors, which are 11th and 14th and 17th Streets. So this shows, you can see there's a larger area around 14th Street that gets that collector area assessment. So the proposed assessments, all total, there were 450 of them. Most of those come because of that collector area. There are two properties that don't have an assessment. I believe they were both, the public housing, there's an agreement where public housing properties do not get special assessments, and so that's what those two properties are. The total amount being assessed is 843,000. Average assessment is 1,872, and the minimum and median were both 575, because more than half of the properties that were being assessed are the area-wide assessments. And then the city-owned properties that also get assessed through this are $25,000 of the amounts. So the, again, the total project cost is $3,820,000. About 25% of that is getting assessed. And then Morehead Public Service has about a $322,000 share, because they'll reimburse us for the cost of the water main that we included in our contract. And then you can see the breakdown, too, of the front footage to the area-wide assessments, so the area-wide is about a quarter of the assessments all total. So the mailed public hearing notice went out on March 14th. In response to that, we've received about six or seven calls. They were general questions, you know, how does the assessment get calculated, how's access to my property handled, things like that. And then they were notified that any comments that we would receive, we would talk about at the public hearing, and so we've not received any objections to the project. Informational presentation was posted back in February, and as of last week, there'd been 64 reviews of that, and several dozen calls had been fielded in response to that. Most of those calls had to do, again, with what the assessments were going to be, how access handled during construction, and then also, how could they replace their sewer service if they wished to do that? Some of that was driven, there was a local contractor had actually sent them letters saying, hey, if you want to do this, we can do this for you, so that generated a lot more interest than we usually see. And then with the sidewalk gap, we sent out a letter to the six properties, and I've already summarized that. So this project, we've been looking into this one since December, when the council ordered the report. We will be receiving bids later this week, and so if at the close of the hearing, if you order the improvements, we'll be receiving bids later this week. At the next council meeting, we would bring the award of bid for your consideration, and then the project would be constructed this year. So, again, tonight, we're asking you to hold the public hearing, and at the close of the hearing, to consider a resolution to order the improvements. And since this is one of our typical CIP projects, it was not petitioned by the residents, it's proposed by the city, therefore, to order the improvements requires a vote of seven of the councilmembers. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, City Engineer Trobridge. Are there any members of the public who have commented during the public hearing portion item of this agenda? If you do, you can come up to the podium. We have to actually have you come to the podium and state if you're a Morehead resident, and state your name, and then we have to do it so that people on the video are able to hear you as well, and then we'll have you fill out a form after you're done with the city clerk.
My name is Deb Benson. I live on 14th Street North. My question is probably for this gentleman here. My driveway, my house was built in 1928. My driveway's real narrow, going into my driveway is narrow. Is that going to stay narrow, or are they going to make it a regular size?
This is probably a question, we can work with you on what the width would be. There's a petition process if you want to widen it in the right of way, but I can talk to you, I'll talk to you afterwards. We can go out in the hallway there, and I can talk to you a little bit.
And then my other question is on the math. Maybe I'm reading my letter wrong, okay? But it says I pay $2,815, and over 20 years, at 200, I think it's an average, $295 a year would be like $5,900. So I don't quite understand how they get that.
Yeah, and I can explain that also out there, but that would be, there's interest on, so if it goes, when you do a special assessment, there's the principal amount, which is today's dollars, and it's like a loan at the bank. If you, assessment's spread over 20 years, it'll be at whatever interest we get plus like an extra percent or something on the bond, but, so there's interest that goes into it. So if you let it go on the property taxes and pay it off over time, you'll have that interest which adds to the total payment. You could choose to pay it all upfront, and then you have no interest. Those are options.
One other question for you, I'm sorry. I heard you right, because you talked about lead pipes that are out there, are they replacing all of them?
So, again, with the lead services, so Morehead Public Service will replace them up to, probably up to the edge of the right of way, I believe. Morehead Public Service has some people here. This is another question that would be good to talk about out there. We can share what the information is. Basically, we can't really go beyond the right of way. The state, and I think even the federal government, have passed, they've created some funding sources that will help replace services beyond that. Problem is, it's kind of an unusual situation, and they haven't, they haven't yet set up the rules for the rules for how that funding would come out. And so there, I, I think there may be an option in the future, but for now, if you wanted to go from the right of way to your house, that extra cost would be yours. You'd have to hire someone to do it.
But they're not doing the whole suite. If I'm reading the thing right, they're not doing the entire water line.
I, that will be easier, we, again, we'll talk about it there. They're gonna, if it's a cast iron water main, they're replacing the cast iron water main. And if the lead service, they would replace from the main to the edge of the right of way.
Yep, and fortunately, we do have people here from Moorhead Public Service who'll be able to, to sit down and visit with you and provide you with more details on those.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this, this agenda item? Sir, you can come to the podium and state your name if you're a Moorhead resident. And then ma'am, just make sure you fill out a form from our city clerk.
Hi, my name is Scott Sandland. I live at 415 Sixth Street South in Moorhead. I was going to wait until the H agenda popped up, but something came up similar to my situation with the lead water lines. I am certified through the EPA and also tech to handle lead safely. And my concern is, my house, the original part was built in 1890. And I understand that somebody's going to come out and try to test my line to see if it is lead, but there's a problem there. I know in the past that the meter was replaced, some of the concrete was jackhammered out, and there was a copper pigtail put in there. So my problem is, I want to know how we're going to discern whether or not I have a lead line from that point to the street, which I'm pretty sure I do. Now, I understand where my private property is. According to the city, that's my responsibility to replace that lead line. Problem being is, there's probably a lot of people in our neighborhood that cannot afford to have that done at that time, which is most opportune. My concern is that once you cut into that from the main, when you replace the cast iron, and you go to that point where it's private versus public, you're going to disturb that line. And when you make those connections, there's going to be a certain amount that gets into the water supply that goes into private homes. And those homes that have children, anybody, even me, could get affected a little bit more. I think I'm beyond that point. But anyway, my concern is, being this is coming so quickly, I think the people should know what their risks are. And if you guys could find out if there's any funding to help them, you know, get a line serviced from the public to their private, that would be very beneficial. This all kind of came down like a hammer on me. I've been really busy with a lot of private stuff. And when I found out what was going on, I'm like, great, you know, now's the time to, to find out what we can do. And my other question is, and this is great for MPS, which I'm glad they're here. I tried talking with one of the engineers of the city here recently and I was told that I might get some answers from them. But once these connections are made and the water starts running smoothly again back into the house, carrying some of the lead with, will there be any testing done so these people know whether or not they're at risk and whose expense is that? Since the city is tearing it up, I feel like we, the city, should help pay for at least a water test for them so they know what they're consuming, you know? So anyway, that's where my concerns are at.
Thank you. General Manager Schmidt, could you maybe come up and address some of these questions in regards to the lead pipes, please?
Commissioner, or excuse me, Commissioner, I'm used to the other meetings. Mayor and city council members and members of the public, these are all things that we have been considering as part of this process. Again, this has been moving very quickly. And so we're still again trying to figure out all the details as City Engineer Trowbridge had talked about as well too. A lot of things aren't set up yet completely, so we're still trying to figure out what those rules are for the revisions that are occurring with the lead, lead service lines. I've got Jake Long and Mark Pritchard here as well too, our distribution manager and our water plant manager as well. And they'll explain some of the details regarding how the treatment works, along with how the replacement's going to work. These are all up for consideration. We understand that there is some issues regarding if we do replace the public portion, which is a, a good time to do that because now we don't have to disturb the street additionally and tear it up and then have to patch it. So that, that impact is going away right away, but we still have to figure out the pieces that are going to happen as the private side of that line gets replaced going forward. We anticipate that there will be funding. We've been told there's funding available. It's just not the, like Tom had talked about, that information hasn't been set in place yet and how you manage that. It sounds like we are going to have to do that as a group of projects, similar to how we're handling the street project as well too, where we take and we do, you know, 10 or however many houses are on that block at once with a contractor. It sounds like it's going to have to work through the utility to get those replaced. Again, we would hire a contractor to do that, go through the house. As for the, the determination on how, if it's a lead service line, again, we've done multiple pushes to try to get information on what type of lead service lines are within the homes. Again, we've sent out mailers, we've, we've put door hangers on the house to go through and try to figure out what it is that they have there. If we can't figure it out and, or we don't get notification back from the customer, we have to determine that line as a lead service line until we can justify that it is a, a copper line or some other form of, of service line that does not have lead in it. So those are the pieces of it. I'm going to have Jake and Mark kind of talk over the treatment process. We do anticipate that we will have to go out and do some flushing. So we'll have to take all the nozzles off of the faucet so that everything can flow out and flush the entire surfaces. Try to get that out, along with try, doing some testing as well too. So there is some increment testing that has to occur based on what type of, what comes back from the initial one. So typically it would be an initial one and then it sounds like every so many months or up to six months be, between tests that would occur. And then you'd have to continue to do that until that, that level goes below a certain threshold. So the other piece of that, and maybe I'll just cover this, with the treatment process that we do, we do, we do put a, a chemical into it so that it avoids that leaching process from the lead service lines as well too, to help avoid, you know, getting leaching into the houses as well too. So there's a lot of things that we do in the front end to avoid that. But again, we do know that this could have a little potential for some risks there as well. So trying to alleviate those as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schmidt. And I would encourage anybody who is watching or listening to reach out to Moorhead Public Service if you have specific questions in regards to your property. And for the two individuals who spoke, again, Mr. Schmidt is here along with two of the engineers from Moorhead Public Service and also engineers from this, this city of Moorhead. So you should be able to get a lot of your questions answered tonight after this hearing. So any other members of the public who wish to speak on the public hearing portion of this agenda item? Any other members of the public who wish to speak? All right, seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So move, Niesmeyer.
Second, Nelson.
We have a motion by Niesmeyer, a second by Councilmember Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is closed. Any questions for City Manager Trowbridge or, or Mr. Schmidt? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution to order the improvements and declare intent for 9G.
So move, McDougal.
Second, Seldervold.
McDougal with the motion, second by Seldervold. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. And to our, what is that, our fourth public hearing, third, fourth? Looking for a motion to open the public hearing for Fourth Avenue South, Fifth Avenue South and Sixth Street South area street improvements.
So move, Deb White.
Second, Nelson.
Motion by White, second by Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open and I will turn it over to Assistant City Engineer Clay Lexon.
Thank you again, Mayor and members of council. This public hearing is being held to satisfy the requirements of Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 429, to receive public comment prior to ordering improvements. That will include the use of special assessments to finance those improvements. So this is the public hearing for Fourth Avenue South, Fifth Avenue South and Sixth Street. Project will consist of street improvements, replacement of the old cast iron water main and sidewalk and ADA improvements. This project is in an older part of town. The pavement was originally constructed as concrete in the 1940s. Fifth Avenue and Sixth Street later received a bituminous overlay and Fourth Avenue South received a new pavement section in the early 1990s. The pavement condition index, or PCI, has quite a wide range, varying from 17 to 76. There is sidewalk throughout the entire project area. However, there are not any ADA compliant pedestrian ramps. Regarding utilities, the storm sewer is in good condition. The majority of the sanitary sewer is clay tile, but most of it has been lined and is in good working condition. There is one section that is unlined, but that could be lined at a later date if needed. All the water main, with the exception of one block, is cast iron and is due to be replaced. The proposed improvements include the reconstruction of Sixth Street and a mill and overlay of Fifth Avenue. Per the engineer's report, it was originally recommended to do a mill and overlay on Fourth Avenue. But after considering the scope of utility work on that street and the amount of pavement that would need to be patched, we're currently recommending that the section receive a rehab instead of a mill and overlay. We believe this is a cost-effective measure, given the circumstances for the amount of patching, and that will get substantially more life out of the road with a rehab. The rehab of Fourth Avenue was included in the bid, which occurred last week, and it was included in that bid as an alternate. The staff recommends awarding that alternate bid. The reconstruction on Sixth Street would include the replacement of the entire pavement section as well as the curb and gutter. A mill and overlay such as that on Fifth Avenue would remove the top couple inches of pavement and then we would put back a new layer of pavement. If Fourth Avenue is rehabbed, that would include replacing the entire pavement section, but the curb and gutter would be left in place. We will replace a large portion of sidewalk on Sixth Street and do spot where, spot repairs elsewhere as needed to maintain ADA compliance. All the pedestrian ramps in the area are non-compliant, so we will replace all of those. As I mentioned previously, the old cast iron water main will be replaced with new PVC water main. The city is partnering, the city is partnering with MPS to do that work under this contract. MPS is also expecting lead water services in this area, which if we encounter, we will replace within the right of way. This is a map of the assessment area. Sixth Street is proposed to be a reconstruction, which would be assessed at $135 for front foot. Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue were proposed to be assessed at the mill and overlay rate of $40 a front foot. As previously mentioned, we're proposing a change of scope of work on Fourth Avenue from the mill and overlay to the rehab. However, we're not proposing a change to the assessment rate. There are a total of 75 properties within the assessment area. The total amount being assessed is approximately $293,000. The average assessment is about $4,000. The maximum assessment is $11,800. This project was bid last week. If the bid with the alternate is awarded, the total project cost is expected to be approximately 2.17 million. The city's share of that cost is approximately 1.46 million, with $293,000 coming from assessments. MPS will pay for the work related to the installation of the water main, and that's estimated to be approximately $710,000. So the public hearing notice was mailed out on March 14th. At the time that council agenda was due, we hadn't received any comments. However, towards the end of last week and then early this week today, we've received several comments and questions from residents pertaining to utility and service work, especially for the water and sanitary services. There were questions for the city's scope of work for the sanitary main and also several questions pertaining to lead water services. Those questions on the lead services pertain to the scope of work and whether we would be replacing the water services all the way up to the house. And then who would bear the cost of replacing that water main on private property? And then what water quality testing would be done after that work was complete? And we worked with MPS to answer those questions and, and hopefully they can answer those questions here tonight as well. To summarize, some of this has already been explained, but I'll summarize it again. If during the project we locate a lead service, we will replace that service within the right of way at no additional cost to the homeowner. MPS owns the service from the main to the curb stop. The remaining part from the curb stop to the house is considered private. If a homeowner would like to replace it the rest of the way, there are several options they can consider. If they would like to do it as soon as possible, they can hire their own contractor to complete the work on the property. And this would be done at their cost. And it's my understanding that it's not a cost that can currently be reimbursed to them. Alternatively, as previously mentioned by Tom and from Travis, Minnesota Department of Health does have dedicated funding set aside for this. However, the mechanism for how that gets made available is still being worked out. We had a informational presentation that was posted back in February. And as of last week, we had 57 views on that video. So this project again was bid last week. And tonight after the closure of the public hearing, we're asking you to consider a resolution to order the improvements and award the bid based on the alternate to rehab Fourth Avenue instead of a mill and overlay. Because this is a CIP project and not a petition project, it takes seven out of eight council members to approve. That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Assistant City Engineer Lexon. Any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? And any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So move, Niesmeyer. Wait seconds.
Niesmeyer with the motion, White with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the public hearing is closed for this agenda item. So would be looking for a motion to approve 9I and 9J Resolution to Order Improvements and Declare Official Intent and Resolution to Award the Bid.
We need to specify that we're doing the alternate too because there was two options. I'll make that motion as long as we're saying we will, we will support their alternate, the alternate bid.
Second, Nelson.
We have a motion by White and a second by Nelson. Questions or comments? Councilmember Seldervold.
No, I'm, this is kind of more of an informational question is that I know on Sixth Street, there's some of those houses that have been, they're, they're apartments basically. Do they get assessed the same as just a single family dwelling? They do?
I believe they do on a unit basis.
Thank you.
Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Bob knows I'm super excited about this project too. So, so one of the ones I've been talking about for a long time. But I do wonder, I wonder if you could give us a little more information about the rehab because as you've mentioned, this is one of those areas where we have that really old concrete. And I know one of the problems has been that the asphalt doesn't adhere very well. So are, in the places where there is still that very old concrete, will they then be taking that concrete out and putting in a new gravel base before they put on the asphalt?
On Sixth Street, which has some of the concrete base, that entire section, that'll get all-new bituminous pavement. So that, that'll be all-new, an entirely new street. On Fifth Avenue, which, which also has concrete pavement, we are not proposing to take that concrete out. We're proposing to mill off the existing pavement and then overlay it at this time.
What I was afraid of is, yeah, because I know that's been an ongoing issue is that it just doesn't last, it doesn't stay on. And then we have this very uneven surface. So is there a reason? So is there a reason why we went in that direction?
So available funding is certainly a part of that. Currently, we're assessing our minimum amount that we can on this project. It's just a hair over 20%. If we rehab that, you know, we're going to be assessing less than that 20% threshold.
Let me ask, and maybe this is a question for Bob. What's a typical length of time that that asphalt stays on that concrete, then?
We would expect a mill and overlay to last approximately 20 years.
With the concrete, or when, are you talking about just a regular mill and overlay on other surfaces?
In general, a typical mill and overlay, we would expect to last about 20. I don't...
Right, but this isn't a typical one, because the ongoing issue is that the asphalt doesn't stay on it. So that's why I'm asking, do we know what is typical with this surface, because it doesn't last?
I would say it's not common for us to overlay concrete streets, concrete pavement streets like this. It happens. It's not something that we typically see. We could explore an option to rehab that and see if there is a possibility to change the scope of work in another part of the project area that would allow a rehab of that area. Be happy to explore that.
Yeah, I mean, because I think we've been, the concrete is 85-plus years old, and it's been, they've been putting asphalt on that year after, for years, and it never stays on.
Sure. I mean, we would love, engineering would love to put a new pavement section in there. A lot of the time, in this case, it's coming down to the funding and the amount that we can assess on that project.
Yeah, I just wondered in terms of what the cost, like if we're looking at, if we just keep doing the same thing over and over and it doesn't last as long, then if we were to spend the money and take that asphalt, or take that concrete out, and then it would last for 20 years with the mill and overlay, what would be the cost difference by doing that instead of repeatedly doing something that doesn't last for very long?
Sure. And...
And also creates roads that are not accessible.
And I'm just gonna just maybe, Dr. Zimmerman, could you maybe come up? Because I know that you and Councilmember White have had numerous conversations regards to this, and you are probably having a better understanding of what she's trying to get asked here.
I enjoyed the conversation. I thought it was wonderful. I think there's a couple things that, and I don't have the answers to this right here, so we can go back and look. Typically, when we design these, we do soil borings in advance, so we know more about what's there in the section that's there, and the condition of the concrete that's there. My assumption is we took that into consideration in this design, but we'll go back and take a look at that. I think we could explore the alternative, and whether or not financially it fits within the project to do a potential change order for a rehab. I don't remember the last time that there was asphalt placed over this concrete, but this asphalt being done as a project would be much different than an asphalt patch, for example. A patch you wouldn't expect to last very long, and I think that's the experience we're talking about here. I think the results here would be somewhat different, but I think we can certainly look into those and get some information back to the council.
Great. Yes, and I do support the alternative, and I appreciate your recommendation that we charge the residents based on what was initially proposed.
Thank you, Dr. Zimmerman. Councilmember Kruhn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more question. Since we've had different residents come and ask questions about the pipes going from their home to the street, and we know that the state has some funding with the Department of Health, we don't understand the mechanism yet, but do we have an inquiry out to them to find out if there's a timeline, or if citizens may be able to retroactively get some of that covered?
I'm looking behind me for one of the MPS staff. They would be well-equipped to answer that question. My understanding is they're actively in conversations, and I've had several conversations with the Department of Health even within the last several weeks.
Okay, great.
But as to how that exactly works, I don't know. They have that answer yet.
Okay. Thank you. Assistant City Engineer Lexon, all of those lead pipe questions would have to go to more public services, is that correct?
We'd be happy to facilitate that. So if there's a question for us, yeah, we'll work with them to get that question answered. But yes, in general, they should, yes.
So I see General Manager Travis Schmidt just walked back into the room. So Councilmember Kruhn, maybe you could restate your question so that Mr. Schmidt could answer that.
Absolutely. So since we've had many residents asking tonight, and throughout those surveys, are asking about the pipes going from their homes to the street, how they can replace that, and if the state has some funding available. Like we mentioned, we don't know what the mechanism is yet, and they haven't quite got that figured out yet, but just making sure that we've been, you know, in conversation with them and asking, do we have a timeline on when that might happen, or is there a possibility for it to be retroactively covered for some of our residents?
Correct. So yes, the answer is yes. We have been working with the Minnesota Department of Health on this process. We've also applied for some dwarf loan grant funding and financing pieces as well, too. So there's a couple mechanisms that are coming into play, but they're just not approved yet, so they haven't released those funds. So if, and we were just talking with a gentleman out in the lobby as well, too. The issue is, is it's not, it won't go backwards, it's only going forward. So that's why we're only replacing what's up to the, what's the public piece of that lead service line, because we can do that now with the project. They haven't figured out, because it's a privately-owned service line, they haven't figured out all those mechanisms of how to do it, because it's public funds for private infrastructure. And so that's the pieces that are still being worked out through the Department of Health and the federal government as well, too, is trying to figure out how those rules and revisions all kind of mesh together to work. So I might have missed a couple of your questions there. So, you know, again, we would, you know, like the city's doing a project this year, we would, you know, come in probably the next year to do those. It might even be an opportunity to do them yet the same year, but we've got to hold those projects separately because of prevailing wages. Otherwise, if the city and MPS does a combined project, we got to pay prevailing wages on the entire project, even though it's just a lead service line piece of it that is the impact. So there's a cost of doing that. It could increase the overall cost of the project, the overall assessments to the residents as well, too, and we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. If a customer would want to do that, they could, I'll defer to Bob on this for yes or no, if he can answer it, but they could specially assess those pieces. But from my understanding, as of last week, there is no retroactive reimbursement for those at this point in time. From the assessment, Bob? Yeah, we've done that, so. Did I answer all your questions? Because there was a lot there.
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Again, if there's more questions, please reach out to MPS. We can help you answer the questions you've got as well, too.
Councilmember Neesmeyer.
Thank you. I actually have one more for you, Mr. Schmidt. The Assistant City Engineer had mentioned with this specific hearing, there were residents who were concerned about testing. Could you just recap the testing that would be involved with this particular project in this neighborhood, so those who are tuning in for their specific hearing could hear the testing that MPS will be doing when MPS is removing the lead pipes?
So again, we'll be doing the public side of the thing. So we, basically, the demarcation point is what we call the curb box, or the shut-off valve. And so we'll replace the piece that goes to the water main from there. After that, we'll, would be the public, or private side, excuse me, and so we would, what we would do at that point in time is we would, I'm sure we'd have to have employees come into the house, or have the homeowners do the flushing. Again, we'll have some details on that and communication on how that should be done. At the same point in time, we're gonna, we're still figuring out, working with a third-party laboratory to do that testing as well, too. Conversations we had last week regarding this was, we'd have to do one right away as soon as the line was replaced, and then based on what we're seeing for testing, we would have to do it again in increments after that until we get it below that threshold.
Any further questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, I do have a motion and a second on the table, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so 9I and 9J carry. Thank you, Mr. Lexon. Right, moving on to 12A, and I will turn this over to Ms. Robin Houston.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson, and councilmembers. Back in 2022, the council approved the onward Morehead Comprehensive Plan Update. So tonight, we are here to address the first of many complementary zoning code changes and changes to our zoning map. Some of the main purposes of tonight's proposed code changes are to help provide quality housing in Morehead by modernizing our codes. Our last code was updated about 20 years ago, so it's been a bit. Provide some more flexibility for homeowners and builders, address infill development, and then also address some of the problems that I've seen in the five years that I've worked here as a city planner. In the next 12 to 18 months, I will be bringing other text and map amendments for you for updating, but I wanted to share a couple of experiences that I've had with residents and why I chose to address the residential districts first. There is a property owner in Oakport, in the Oakport annexation area, that would like to add a bedroom, because they would like to have a foster child under the current setbacks, which are 50 feet for most sides of the property. They can't do an addition to their home. So with these proposed changes, they would be able to, with the new 30-foot setbacks. There is another property owner who came to council a few months ago that has a lot that's about 200 feet deep, and by the removal of the minimum lot depth, he will be able to split his parcel now and create a second buildable lot in his neighborhood. And then just another example is, we have some property owners that have one acre or larger lots in Morehead, and they are limited to just very small, typical garages, and we've had a lot of requests in this particular neighborhood to build some of the larger garages that we do allow up in Oakport. So we're going to be taking a look at the accessory structures ordinances next as a complement to the residential districts. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed changes last year on April 3rd and June 5th, and unanimously recommended approval to the city council without any public comment. Since those meetings, we've had more back and forth between staff, and we've done quite a bit more analysis on the proposals, and so we did revert back to some of the other, the original language, and just clarified a few things. I did note that, for the second reading, I will bring back a slight modification in the text, because I changed something in your zoning table that's in your packet, but I forgot to change it in the text, and it's interior side yard setbacks for other principal uses in the residential districts. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Houston. Any questions, comments from council? Councilmember White.
Mayor, Robin, could you talk, I want to get a little clarification on the list. It's number four, RLD 1, 2, 3, RMD 1, and RHD 1. You've got, not the first sentence, but the part where it says, "other permitted principal uses in residential districts," and then it's got a long list of them, including parking lots. Is that currently, or is that being changed?
Nope, that is current. So in our residential districts, we do have quite a few other things that are allowed besides housing. So schools, for example, churches, parks, licensed nursing facilities, bed and breakfast. We don't have any of those currently in Morehead, but they could be campus organizations, child and adult daycare, utility structures. So yeah, that has been in our code, and it still exists in our code, and that was what I was just referring to, is the change that I made in the zoning, and it's basically creating a buffer. So if somebody, say, wanted to build a church in a residential neighborhood, they would now have to have a 25-foot setback on the side that they would share with single and two-family housing.
It was specifically the parking lot one, so you don't need a conditional use permit in a residential area, but in a parking lot?
Some districts. You're thinking of mixed-use where the campus area, those do, and then some of the residential districts do. So there's, there are some, yeah, those are, I don't have the code right in front of me, but yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
The CUP, there is CUP for residential parking lots in residential.
Yeah, and I think that that's why, when I looked at the RLDs that are listed in here, or the residential districts, I thought that, I'm specifically because I can recall an incident in my neighborhood, and it's, I think sometimes when you have those neighborhoods that are residential but a but mixed-use, you know, I think taking extra consideration of making sure that we allow for, even just by requiring a CUP, that there's that opportunity for public input, because, you know, the incident that occurred in my neighborhood was, we had a large multifamily unit that was being put up in the mixed-use neighborhood, but then wanted to, well, take out different, you know, was taking out houses and wanted to put in a large parking lot in the residential area. And so I would hate to see things like that where there's not something that would be just a little, you know, something to say, okay, let's take a pause here, make sure we get some good public input, and I think that the CUP allows, is a good way to do that. And so I would, I was concerned that I wouldn't want to see us losing that, so...
No, it's, now that I look at it, there are residential parking lots, religious institutions, and schools all require a conditional use permit. So that's still in the code. I just should have worded it differently. So these are not by right uses, but they are uses that can be allowed in residential districts, either by right or by conditional use.
Okay, so when it says permitted, it doesn't necessarily mean...
Yes, it should have said permitted, by permit, or, yeah.
Very helpful.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Neesmeyer.
And to clarify, when I was reading through the packet, this made our zoning for residential more inclusive, right? It offered up more options for developers to build in our home, or build our homes, right? More middle home opportunities, not just apartments or single-family homes, but more of those middle homes, more twin homes, more row homes, more variety, and allowed more terminology to go with that within our zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the highlights would be is, we are increasing heights in our residential districts, and that will afford people that have, maybe have a smaller parcel, they can build up, so they could still get maybe some more units, and to do an extra story versus, a lot of the resident, or the residential districts were limited to 35 to 45-feet heights. Now, some of them will go up 45 to 55, depending on what they're located next to.
Councilmember Selgevold.
When it came to ADUs, was that just a disgust? Is it just like, we don't want them in town, or is it, I'm kind of a fan of them, I guess? And the other question I'm going to have is, you know, I'm also a fan of tiny homes, and it says that kind of, they have to be built in a manufactured home park, is that the terminology there? And so if a person wanted to, if a developer wanted to set up a neighborhood of tiny homes, would that have to be, would it be a conditional use?
So right now, yes, ADUs are not permitted. I know it's been discussed in the past, and it's a hot topic, so I figured it might come up when we start talking about the accessory structures for the next text amendment, but right now, yeah, they're not permitted. Regarding tiny homes, they're defined as a manufactured home by building code. They have to meet certain standards, and they have to be built a certain way. So if somebody wanted to develop a... So if somebody wanted to develop a tiny home, microhome neighborhood, you know, if they, if they found a parcel large enough to do so, we would do that by like a, a PUD by CUP. So essentially, the, the conditional use permit would allow it. Council could put conditions on it, you know, limiting the number of units, making sure they have green space, those types of things. It is permitted, and I've had inquiries, but we've just not had anybody try it yet. But it is a hot topic, so we'll probably be talking more about that right now. In our current code, we also have minimum widths for housing structures. And unfortunately, the tiny homes are much smaller than that minimum, so that would require a change as well. But yeah, we have been, we do get a lot of inquiries about the tiny homes and also placing them as accessory structures.
Councilmember Niesmeyer.
Thank you. Robyn, I was just going to ask if you could define some of those acronyms that you used in referencing the CUPD for the PUD.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 that's right. For people who might be listening at home, they might think, you know, that is what my dream is, is to have a land of tiny homes. Or they've been watching HGTV, and that might be what they want to do with their land in the south of town. But defining some of those acronyms might help them understand what they would need if they wanted to do that.
Right, so a CUP is a conditional use permit, and we do those quite frequently for various things in the city. And it's, it's a simple application, requires a public hearing, Planning Commission and council review and approval. And then the CU, the PUD by CUP. PUD is a plan unit development, and that's basically just a type of residential development. We actually use PUDs, you can use PUDs for commercial, but they're typically used for residential. And it's, it's basically, you're creating something special, and that's where I think the tiny homes would fit, because you're kind of creating a special area in a special, you know, neighborhood. So we're just hoping that somebody maybe comes up with a, something, something like that if they can find a parcel large enough to do it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance on 12A.
So move, Niesmeyer. Wait seconds.
A motion by Niesmeyer or a second by White? Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. And moving on, 13A was removed from consent agenda, so I'm not sure who, would this be?
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to take this one, if that works. Councilmember White had asked about, on the application for the new liquor license for the bunker, the security plan. So that plan is part of the application. It's in the packet. It speaks to building security as well as employee and guest security. And I think what we'll do going forward is we'll be sure to include that provision in the mayor and council communication under the bullets of everything, all the required documents, so that council members know that that is part of the application.
Further questions? Councilmember White.
And actually, what I'd like to do is then change the, propose that we change the resolution and just add security plan to the list. So in the sentence where it says, "now therefore be, be resolved by the city, city council, blah, blah, blah," that we include that in the list. Because if we are saying that these are required, again, I just, it's a discussion that we had last year that we're treating all businesses the same, and so it seems like it should be in that list as well.
So City Attorney Shockley, should we take these two separate? So that particular motion isn't necessarily attached to this liquor license?
It is. So it's saying we would approve it. So in the motion, the resolution, it says, "now therefore be resolved" that the city council in the city of Morehead, that the city council does hereby approve the issuance of the liquor licenses noted above based on the submission of the following. So, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear enough, yeah.
You could, Madam Mayor, you could treat it as one single motion, just adding that additional item in as long as the person who seconded it is okay with that.
Thank you.
I'm moving, I move that we approve the liquor license with the addition of the security plan in the list of items to be submitted.
Have a second for that motion?
Second.
So a motion by White, a second by Niesmeyer, further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution carries. Moving on to mayor and council reports, are there any council members who have reports for the council on any boards or commissions? Councilmember Niesmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending the Clay County, no, not Clay County, the Cass-Clay Food Partners, the Food Commission meeting just a couple of weeks ago. And we had a wonderful report from the Cass-Clay Hunger Coalition, and they talked about the meal repacking program and how it started. It was born out of a First Friday. I don't know if anybody had ever had the opportunity to attend any of the First Fridays sessions. And in 2021, there was a pilot program with three schools, one of which was Morehead High School, where they started repacking lunches and doling them out to families in need, who were families of students and their families in the schools. And so Zoe Absy and Amber Lockhart, Zoe is from the Great Plains Food Bank, and Amber is from Northern Cass Schools, talked about how far, just from 2021, the program has come. It's expanded from three schools to six. And they are looking to expand not only to K-12 schools, but preschools and colleges. And they're actually looking for additional food sources, churches, caterers, event centers, churches and businesses who are looking for opportunities to not have their food go to waste, but rather have it repackaged and served to families. Amber Lockhart, who's in Northern Cass, just north of town, actually talked about how she found in their community that elders in their community were also dealing with hunger. And the, the students in their K-12 system, actually, the Family Consumer Science, I wanted to get that right, it's not Home Ec anymore. The Family Consumer Science students actually started cooking meals for the elders in their community, repacking it, and using that as a sort of continuation of what they had learned in their meal repacking program, being really successful in their school. And so looking at ways just to continue ripple effects in Morehead. And so if we have businesses, churches, event centers, or caterers who are interested, you can reach out to Zoe Absy, or at the Great Plains Food Bank, or Jill Ambul, who's the coordinator at the Cass-Clay Hunger Coalition, and they would love to connect and see how we can continue that and those efforts in Morehead.
Thank you, Councilmember Niesmeyer. Yeah, any other council members have reports? Councilmember Carron.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of things happening in the last week, but one, one highlight for some of us that were able to attend, Hope Inc. had invited us to play sled hockey with some of the, the kids there. So councilmembers White and Hendrickson and the mayor, and some family members were able to, to go and have a really great time with them on, on Friday and not get our butts kicked, which was kind of nice. It was a great time.
I think it's the first time in three years we actually won the game.
Good goalie.
All right, any other council members? All right, and then moving on to my reports, just a quick recap of the last couple of weeks. Didn't do a report last council meeting, so the 20th of February, I attended River Point Senior Living Facility and spoke to a group of older adults who really was, were interested in what was going on in the city of Morehead. We also had a Sanders Flat Ribbon Cutting, which is the 55-plus apartment complex for older adults in Morehead, connected to Eventide. We had several diversion meetings, as well as our dispatch board meeting that was last week, or, yeah, last week as well. Coalition of Greater Minnesota's Action Day at the Capitol. We were able to meet with Senator Kupac to talk about flood mitigation within the city and the county. And I was also on a panelist with the State of Maine Streets with State Auditor Julie Blaha, really emphasizing and discussing how we are the fastest, fourth-fastest-growing community in the entire state of Minnesota. It was part of the J-Tomas show that was hosted by Horace Mayor Cory Peterson. It was a mayor roundtable, and all five metro mayors were on, talking about the different types of projects and things going on in our community. And one of the things that I talked about quite a bit was the 11th Street Underpass, that groundbreaking that actually happened on Saturday, where Governor Walz and U.S. Senator Amy Klobuchar were in attendance, along with, you know, a number of other elected officials. So it was supposed to start today, but because of the weather, it is starting on Wednesday. So the project will be two years, and there will be a lot of information put out by this MinDOT-led project. So that is all I have for mayor updates, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Molly.
No updates today, Mayor.
Great, and we don't have an executive session or any new business, so it's 7:14, and we are adjourned. Night, Morehead.